Uh, we have a, we have three people here, am I correct, Richard?
Uh, you yourself and John and Amy are all on, on the call or on the conference, yes.
Okay, good enough then. Everybody's okay with that, I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, and I will open with a pleasurable allegiance. A pleasurable allegiance to flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
Roll call.
Amy, here. John?
Here.
Chairman?
Here.
Then we have Harley, Rich, and Jeremy.
All right.
And Sean, Sean with IT is on too.
Alrighty, we have, we have a forum here, okay. Um, I will just, if everybody's okay with this, we have, I'll dispense with the general commentary, uh, questions or inquiries from the public, and I'll call a regular meeting to order. And the minutes for the March ninth, twenty twenty meeting. I know Laura, you sent us out about a couple of days after the meeting. And if anybody has any corrections to those minutes, if not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by John, seconded by Amy. Roll call, please.
Amy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes, okay, minutes approved for the March eighth meeting. We have no public hearings, we have no old business. Moving into the, the item number seven, which is new business, a discussion of section six point one three subsection E. Uh, Richard, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I would ask for permission to be a presenter. And I'm, I'm going to put up a PDF and probably have to scroll down past the parts of the meeting that we have already, uh, covered. And, and reach section six point one three. May I go ahead?
Go right ahead, Richard.
Okay, let's, uh, let's try this. Uh, no, I better do the whole screen, right? Sean, should I do the whole screen? Sean? Do you see it? Oh, well, well, I didn't know that. Okay, okay, I'm gonna hit cancel. So, uh-oh. Now my blue box went away. Well. Well, my, oh, okay, white bar, present now. My entire screen, a window or a Chrome tab? Oh, 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 I, I, I think I have it on a Chrome tab. Okay. Okay. Oh, come on. No, this is not working. Um.
This is, this is Darryl, and I haven't been able to get on the part where you can see. I don't even, even know what's going on. Yeah. I'd like to, and I don't, I use the, the, uh, address that was supplied to me, and it did nothing. I want to start it now.
Uh, but it, it is down on my taskbar, yes. Yes. Share a window. Okay, present now. Share a window. Okay. Sure. Well, I, I'm not seeing what I'm supposed to be sharing. It, it's, it's on my personal computer. It's open right there. Can, can you see it now? You are. Well, it, it says meeting, meet dot google dot com is sharing a window. Uh. Okay. You wanna choose a window, okay. Good, um. Well, uh, no.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, really at a point where, Darryl?
I don't see anybody. I'm on my phone.
Darryl, I'm on, uh, a phone, I'm not on the computer, so.
Computer wouldn't do a thing for me.
Yeah, just let you know, we are on, um, we're at, uh, item number, new business, item number, uh, seven, discussing section six one point one three E. Okay?
Yeah, everybody in.
Hey, Rich, if it helps, I have the Word document, I can try presenting it right now if you want me to, and I can pull it up to the other thing.
You could, I, I, I have this all set up, I, you know, um, I, I just didn't understand that it was gonna be so complicated to share a screen. Um. Okay, here's Sean. Okay, Sean, let's go.
What are we doing?
I think waiting for Richard to try to get a straight screen.
Yeah, well, I can't even get into the, to a screen.
Neither can I, so I threw the one, just went on the phone.
Who else, who else here, you, me, and?
Amy's here, and so is John.
Amy and John, okay.
Bailey's here too.
All right, we've got all five of us here. Bailey, we're on, uh, new business, section six point one three E. Okay?
Yep, I'm following.
Yeah, I've got that on the, on the paper here. Just basically, that's right. We're looking at. Excuse me. Um, I do have a problem with it. The way it's printed in my copy. All right, until Rich comes back.
There you go.
What we're doing, folks, waiting for Richard to get his, uh, screen set up, to show us section six one point, six point one three eight.
Yeah, I got a problem with it a little bit. Nothing major.
Can anybody hear me?
I hear you.
You can hear me.
Yes, I can. Okay. I, I, I guess we're okay. Oh my God, here we are. Okay.
I don't see anything, but I can see.
Do you see the agenda?
Yeah, we see the agenda now, yep.
Okay.
I don't see anything.
We're, we're, we're going here to section six point one three E. And remember this, um, I, I, I discovered there was a little spelling mistake over here. Um, but we have had a problem with, um, corner lots in that our, our height uh, maximums for fences on corner lots on the side street sometimes interfere with the line of sight safety area, and sometimes do not. Um, we, we're, we're looking for some relief to some homeowners who wanna put their fence up on a corner lot, and it will not really interfere with a line of sight safety area. So this was like a quick fix for that. Um, any, anybody have any other commentary out there?
No, you're cutting in and out on me, but I see your spelling error, it should be may instead of made.
Yeah.
Except it may be made. Other than that, I didn't see a problem with it.
Sean, any problem with it? All right. Amy or John, any questions on E?
I don't have any.
For Bailey?
Uh, no, no.
No questions or issues, no questions or issues.
Thank you, uh, and, uh, Richard, for me, I mean, if this is the only change on this section, I don't see any problem either.
Yeah, I don't have a problem at all.
This is Harley, do we think that we should be more specific in, in what that line of sight safety area is, maybe put it in the, um, you know, being able to see so many feet, like a car backing out of their driveway should be able to see so many feet into oncoming traffic, either putting that in our definitions or including it in that text. Sorry.
That's okay, um, Richard, don't we have somewhere, um, a line of sight, we have it in the definitions or somewhere else in the, in the code?
Um, I, I don't believe so, Ted.
Does Jeremy feel that this would be?
Yeah, I see what Harley's talking about.
Say, say we denied and required a variance, sorry, excuse my daughter, if we need a, um, a variance for one application and not another, and it was our determination alone that triggered that requirement, um, would this language be specific enough in, in, in order for us to, to deny someone's application? Because that's where I see the issue, it's not in the approval. If when we start denying, they're gonna wonder why and need specifics, and I think that they could argue that it's too vague. But that's just my opinion, Jeremy has a better.
Well, I would say certainly it could be considered, um, a little bit, uh, vague, um, but I think as long as we had, um, specific rationalized decision that we made for a zoning appeal, and as long as that had some rational basis that we could articulate in a hearing, uh, I think that would be okay. Obviously, the having a, having it say may, having a little vague gives us, um, more leeway to make a decision. We would just have to make that, make sure that if we were making a decision, that it was based upon still not having the proper line of sight if we denied one and approved somebody else.
Folks, if you look on E, uh, above where Richard has the highlighted area, it, uh, let's see, uh, it's about, about five lines above that where it says front setback by more than ten feet may not exceed a height of thirty-six inches above the natural grade of the land, and may not be installed on mounding. Is that, uh, would that suffice, Harley?
Well, in this, since I don't think that what you think the setbacks that we've established there is for the sake of, of site safety areas, um, but considering corner lots, if, say there isn't a driveway, you know, say it's a multiple acre lot and there isn't a driveway for multiple acres, you know, these setback requirements wouldn't necessarily, uh, um, be as restricted as say someone who has a quarter acre lot and you've got a driveway right behind them, you know, trying to ensure that the and get as much good use out of their backyard as possible. Um, and as long as they're able to, as long as vehicles adjacent are able to see, um, you know, when they're, they're either coming on to or leaving a driveway, or, um, you know, if there's, if there's a cross street right there. Um, so my, my only concern was whether or not we needed to, uh, articulate some, some set standards. Um, but if Jeremy is happy with that, you know, if we are able to look at it and say, let's, no, don't shoot me, um, as long as we are to say, you know, using, I'm, I'm so sorry, my computer's interrupting me right now. Um, as long as we are able to make a determination, you know, just based on common sense, then, then, you know, I'm happy with that.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, and what this language would do is require us when we approved or denied a variance to this, that we would just have to be very specific as to why we approved or denied it. Because of the acreage around it, the amount of houses around it, that kind of thing, we just would have to be very specific for, so for when it did go to appeal, we could articulate why we maybe allowed one and didn't allow another. So it'd be more specific on the back end than on the front end.
That's probably true, and, and the fact is that we're, we're, we're at, at, we, if we recommend this to the trustees as, as amended, may versus made, um, it would be up to the zoning inspector as far as articulating that, why we either accepted it or denied it.
Right.
On, in the bill, correct?
Right.
Um, hey, hey, folks, this, this is Rich speaking. So, listen, this is, um, this is not an actual proposed text amendment, this is not official, this is being discussed with the zoning commission as a potential zoning amendment due to, and, and Harley, correct me if I'm misspeaking here, but you voiced the concern that we have too many variance cases going to the Board of Zoning Appeals for corner lot. So this was my knee jerk reaction to provide a remedy. The Board of Zoning Appeals is still there if we don't wanna make this amendment. And, and, uh, they, they can call the shot on a variance appeal by any citizen who owns a corner lot and wants to put a fence up on the side street. So, um, you know, we, we don't, we don't have to give this any further consideration if the, or, if the zoning commission is satisfied that people have a remedy available by going to the Board of Zoning Appeals. If we have to construct language so specific as to absolve the zoning inspector of any discretionary power, maybe we don't really need this amendment. What do you think?
I think that's a, it's a good point, you know, we're almost taking the power away from the zoning appeal and giving it to the zoning inspector.
Yeah.
This is Ted, um, the only per, people, only thing, the only persons who would be affected by this, folks, would be the person who the zoning inspector would deny. Okay, and obviously if they did not get denied, they wouldn't go to the, um, Board of Zoning Appeals. Is that, is that, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think what Rich is saying though is that we don't, we're, we're basically adding another step in the process by saying that zoning inspector can give this permission when, when really the process should be, if you don't meet the, the zoning code, you just go to the, the BZA.
Okay, that's great, and, and I, and I understand the other point of view from Richard's stuff, like, uh, like you were saying, I don't know if we really wanna make this so, uh, tight, you know what I mean, as far as a, um, you know, a, a, an actual measurement, you know what I mean, that would, a, a corner lot. Yeah, um, what is the board, what is the rest of the board still?
I don't know, because I got cut out. My phone died.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Darryl, go, go ahead, Richard.
This is, I was, uh, trying to think of some of the areas, I know a few areas where there is, uh, people that put a fence, uh, six foot high or higher along the whole side lot. But, um, in that case, their front, uh, still allowed, uh, an intersection there where you could see. Um, as far as, uh, making an exception in this rule, I can see what Bailey is saying, although if, if a rule that, you know, if it's pretty tight law and, and, um, the rule, and if somebody wants to make an exception, then maybe the Board of Zoning Appeals should be, except this is, then it would take their time up and everything that we could handle easy enough by just looking, and there's lots that have, uh, exceptions, uh, to a lot of our rules probably, so I could buy it either way.
Okay, um, I guess what my question may be to Richard or Harley would be, are there a lot of cases on corner lots going to the Board of Zoning Appeals? For variances?
Um, I, I, I don't hear Harley chiming in here, we had, we had originally, when, when this, when, when this text amendment that, uh, that reads like it does, went into effect, we had a number of fence applications for corner lot, which were adversely impacted. So it's like, originally we had quite a few, and, and it could have been just a timing thing, you know, where a number of corner lots were sold and had new owners, and they wanted to put fences up. Um, you know, this, this is typically the kind of a case which would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, who could recognize, uh, and their responsibility is to recognize when the physical layout of the lot and the proposed, uh, construction on the lot will not cause a nuisance in the neighborhood and could be rectified by granting a variance and, and doing justice to property owner. Uh, I, 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 I am not, and, and it sounds to me like after thinking this through, Harley is not necessarily convinced that we want that power being thrust on the zoning inspector. You know, it, it's typically a Board of Zoning Appeals power to recognize situations where some relief from the zoning code should be granted a property owner when it's not going to be against public interest. So, uh, but because we had a number of cases which were adversely impacted by this previous zoning change, which restricted the fence height in front yards and side yards and corner lots, um, we, we just wanted to bring this to the zoning commission for thinking over. You know, do, do we really wanna do anything about this, or just let it be like it is?
Yeah, this is Ted, after listening to you and Harley on this, um, quite frankly, I, I'm with John, I can go either way with it. So, um, that would be the, for me, I, I would, you know, I go, I, so I go either way. Um, I mean, if it's not gonna be that much of a, a nuisance to the zoning, Board of Zoning Appeals, I think that we, we might just let it go. And go no further.
Is safety the only, uh, is it John, is there a safety is the only reason that we might grant a, a change in that rule? A neighbor that didn't want a fence, uh, fairly close to their house where they could not see over it for some reason. Would that be an exception? You know, if you're, if you're putting up a fence six foot high and blocks your neighbor's view, you see, that could be a difference of opinion sometimes.
But that's where his, that, when, when his release, John go to the Board of Zoning Appeals though?
Well.
Yeah, if, if we do not, if we do not adopt this kind of a, uh, text amendment, any, anybody who wants to put a higher fence in their side yard on a corner lot than three feet would still have the right to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yeah.
Which is probably the proper, uh, Bailey's, probably the proper location for their, for their appeal, for their, you know, for their relief. Potential relief.
Right. Um, I'm, 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 I'm not sure where Harley went. Harley, are you still with us?
Yes, I apologize.
Oh, I remember those days. Uh.
I, 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 are you able to, uh, comment, I mean, do, do you think we should, uh, pursue this and, and try to give some more explicit instruction to what the inspector would be allowed to approve? Or, or do you think we should forget making this amendment and leave it in the hands of the Board of Zoning Appeal if and when necessary?
So I definitely feel like we should make these accommodations for the property owners that own corner lots. Every application we have had thus far has been approved, and that, this require, well, the, the limitations that corner lots have on their ability to utilize the space have on their ability to utilize the space in the backyard when one's fenced in, um, you know, requiring them to go to the BZA only to end up with approvals every time. Hold on. Uh, only creates a burden on them that I I'm sorry, personally don't feel is, um, you know, necessary. I think that we can do this the right way in a dressing corner lot. Um, you know, even if we just discuss a specific setback requirement, um, that is the exception to, you know, if it was the the, the, uh, I'm so distracted. Goodness. As long as we are able to give a definition or utilize our own reasoning, um, you know, maybe we create in the office a standard, um, as opposed to writing it in here or while we're here doing this, um, change, we can include it. But I, but I think it's something that we should definitely do. Uh, seeing as how the Board of Zoning Appeals that, that variance is $200 and a regular fence permit is 40, um, you know, I just, I just think it's, it's a burden on her, it's not a necessary burden, seeing as how every application thus far has been approved.
In, in actuality, this, this is Rich again. Um, in actuality, somebody who decides and makes a decision to, to purchase a corner lot has to accept the responsibility to maintain that lot in a safe manner. Um, a, a corner lot is a different animal than an inside lot on a street and requires special caution and consideration when building on that lot in terms of interfering with visibility and public safety. Um, I, I personally would rather see the Board of Zoning Appeals have to differentiate in, in those cases. But that's just my opinion. I, I, too much, too much authority put in the hands of the zoning inspector can sometimes not serve to to benefit the public interest in the same fashion as the Board of Zoning Appeals making determinations.
Uh, this is Ted. Richard, taking what you just said and what Harley was saying, one of the things that, uh, potentially, uh, they, um, an applicant might say he was denied. You and Harley are enforcing the rules at the zoning code as written. The Board of Zoning Appeals can, can, uh, look at an applicant's application and say, okay, yes, even though the code says X, Y, and Z, we understand you, we understand your request for relief and we, yes, we'll grant it, or no, we won't grant it. And it puts the, uh, onus on the Board of Zoning Appeals rather than someone's, uh, complaining or having an overzealous zoning inspector or, or maybe a biased zoning inspector. Takes the, takes the bias away from the zoning inspector and puts the onus on the, uh, Board of, um, Board of Zoning Appeals. So basically, maybe I'm trying, maybe I'm saying that maybe we should just let the, uh, tech, I mean, amendment, I mean, the statute code stay the way it is and not, not make any changes to it. The rest of the work.
These sleeping dogs lie.
Okay. Bailey?
I agree. I think, I, I'd say just leave it as is.
Amy?
Yes, I agree as well. I think we should, uh, leave it the way it is and let it go to the BZA.
Okay. Uh, then, do we, we, we don't need a motion on this, do we? Just let, let it, let it go, right? We just, we, it just, we don't, we, we don't go any further than, than this, than discussion on this text amendment, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. If we're not, if we're not making any change, we don't need a motion.
Okay. E- e- everyone agree with this?
Yeah, I don't.
I could agree.
I'd let it go.
All right. So what we have is five people deciding that we're going to let this thing go and we're not going to make any more further changes to eat as of right now. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, if that's the case, then let's go to discussion of section 1101G.
Okay. Section 1101G is simply to uh, make it clear that the demolition or removal of any existing building or structure from a premises in any zoning district for which no zoning certificate has been issued for replacement of the demise structure shall require a zoning certificate for demolition. That enables the township to effectively remove buildings and structures from properties after they have been demolished. No comment?
Um,
Here's, here's the thing. In, in order for the county to issue a demolition certificate or demolition permit to somebody who's going to demolish a structure, they, they want to know about zoning. Well, you, you know, we have certain zoning things, like you can't have an accessory building on a property if there's no main building. So on a residential property, if somebody has a house and a detached garage and they demolish the house, but we don't know that it's been demolished and, and we, we therefore allow a detached garage to remain on the property, but that's a zoning violation. A, a, a accessory structure is not allowed on a vacant property that doesn't have a main building.
Even if it was there before and there was a main building?
Huh?
Even if there was a main building when it was built?
Well, if, if, if somebody wants to keep an accessory structure on the, on the property, um, they, they can replace, they can demolish and replace the main building. But if they want, if they want to demolish the main building and continue using the accessory building as an accessory used, that, that is not good. That, that, that's a violation.
I know it's done many, many times and somebody has a problem with it.
Um, well, I do.
Now, you're one in a million. Uh, in fact, I have a particular case in which my house was burned down in the city of Painesville. It had to be demolished. And a standalone single car garage is left on the property. As far as I know, it's still there because we sold the property to a neighbor.
Oh. Well, well, did the neighbor combine that property onto their property and?
I don't know what they did or not, and I don't.
I don't know. I don't, I don't know if the city of Painesville had the same rules as.
No, they don't.
Township does. So I'm, I'm just concerned about Painesville Township.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, there are numbers of things when this happens. And to get it tore down is very difficult. Uh, not attached. I was more concerned about the situation where you have a building and it's, uh, pretty rundown and you want to just get rid of it, like a, a shed or something like that, a 10 by 10 shed. You still have to get a permit and pay a price?
Well, yeah, but I, 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 I'm, I'm recommending a pretty cheap permit. It, it's, it's just for the process of being able to regulate effectively the entirety of the Painesville Township zoning resolution by recording and knowing what is going on on properties to the best of our ability.
No, I understand what you're talking about. I'm just playing a little devil's advocate, if you don't mind.
No, no, that's, that's okay. The, 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 the problem can come in and, and we do have a couple cases of this going on right now where uh, dwellings have been removed from R1 residential properties. There's an accessory building being used for commercial purposes on the property.
And they're not commercially zoned?
Well, no, they're R1.
Okay. That's a whole different animal.
Oh, yeah. So, um, yeah, we, you know, this, I, 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 I think something like this has to be in our code to require at, at least a low dollar permit so that we can effectively record what is remaining on the property, what's not going to be on the property and so forth.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I mean, I what happened to me there in Painesville, probably something one in a million that would happen. I don't know that that would happen all the time.
Yeah, but, but.
That's a different entity in a different situation, so we don't want to, we don't want to mix apples and oranges.
And, and, uh, e- even if, if that were in Painesville Township, the, the way that eventually got handled, uh, could have actually led to a situation of compliance with our regulation. Uh, if, if the property where the accessory building remained and there was no main dwelling were sold to a next door neighbor who added that additional parcel onto their original parcel, it, it would have become legal with it, with Painesville Township.
Yeah. So I don't know if they added that to their property or not, because the property I had there had two parcels in it. And that's why we sold it because it has two parcels.
Mm-hmm.
So whatever the city made them do, that I don't know.
Okay.
But the last time I was by there in the fall, the building was still there. But I'm just, you know, in a situation like that, I'm just trying to see if that happened in our township, how would you handle it? I think you've answered my question.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're, we're not looking to penalize people. We're just looking to monitor potentially viol- potential violations.
Yeah. But we had to get a permit to tear down the house. I know that. That was. The guy that tore it down got the permit.
Okay.
That we had to pay for it. But that's, again, that's a, that's a different process, a different place.
Okay, um, all right. Anybody else have any thoughts? Whether we should pursue this or let it go like we did the last one?
I think there should be something in there about this. I don't think we just want vacant lots with garages on them.
Uh, well, I guess our choices are to, I'm sorry, go ahead. Anybody else have any thoughts? No.
Your choices are either don't do it or do it.
Exactly.
The way I see it. The way I see it.
Yeah, exactly. Do we, okay, well, I'll tell you what I'll do then. Um, Richard pretty much explained, I, anybody have any questions on the intent of what uh, this text amendment is talking about? Hearing none. Here's a choice that we, I guess we have, choice we have is make a recommendation, make a, a motion to set a public hearing for section, for addition, for adding section G to section 11.01. Gee, how about set up for public hearing for next meeting?
Uh, th- th- there are three possible decisions, I, I think, Mr. Chairman. Of what you just said is of course, one, one of the options. The second option would be to give it some thought for another 30 days. And the third option would be to forget, um, any, any further conversation on this particular text amendment.
Okay, I mean, we have three, we have three options, either to just say, okay, we're not going to do any more in this text amendment and just, we're not going to even entertain, entertain it. Or we can say, let's, um, put it to old business for next meeting, think about it, or make a motion for a public hearing.
That's correct.
What's the board's pleasure?
John, I, I'm, uh, I've read that thing over and over again. I'm still having a hard time trying to come up with ideas or different situations. I, I personally think that if we waited for 30 days and played this a little bit more, I would have a better opinion on it.
Okay. Um, the rest of the board feel that we should just, uh, uh, ponder it for another 30 days and we'll put it under old business, um, uh, next meeting? I don't have, I don't have a problem going either way.
You need to.
I don't have a problem with that. I'd like to think about it a little more because, you know, I have to think about it in terms of, and I appreciate, uh, Rich's comments on the situation happening in a different area. If that happened here, how would you look at it? That's important.
Okay. Um, if nobody has an objection, why don't we just, uh, I guess for lack of a better word, table this? Uh, make no.
If you need a motion.
We need a motion for that?
You need a motion to table, also move to table. This is Darryl.
Okay, uh, I guess our, uh, our, uh, legal, what, what, what's our options? Can we just, do we need to have a motion to table? Or can we just let it go and, 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 and hold it for discussion for next time?
Uh, no, you don't need a mo- motion to table it and discuss it in the next meeting. Just agree, have it in the minutes that we'll wait. Um, so we'll keep it on. We're not, we're not dropping it, but we're keeping it on the, we're tabling it till next meeting. It'll be part of old business for next meeting. Uh, and then we can probably vote next time whether or not to take it to a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Good to me.
And if the, if the, if the members of the board, members are okay with that, that's what we'll do. We'll just table it and that's at the next meeting. Any objections?
This is Amy. That sounds good to me.
No objections.
John, that sounds good to me.
You have no objections here?
So we have a, a consensus of unanimous consensus to we'll just hold this thing till next meeting under old business. And we'll discuss it then. And we have, then we have time to think about it and talk to Richard. Okay. Okay, we're going to move on now. Okay, number eight. We have no, we have, we have no, we didn't have any public hearings this meeting. And we have no items being held for public hearing. So we're at zoning inspectors' report.
Um, oh, okay, I, I'm your new business. Uh, I, I added a new item on the agenda. I, I, I guess I slipped that past you, Ted. Uh, we discovered that we have had an error in our section 25 for a while.
Okay.
This, this section really, um, and I'm going to take you to section 26. Section 25 is for the I1 light industrial district. Section 26 is the I2 heavy industrial district. And I, I, I'm going to show you what happened in section 26, which used to be constructed very similarly to section 25. Section 26.07, and pay attention to that 07, um, has a couple cross references. Paragraph A refers to a provision in paragraph B right below it. Paragraph B circles back and refers to a statement in paragraph A. And then in section 26.09, there's a reference back to 26.07B. Now, if we back up to section 25, what we're going to find is, I think somewhere along the line, these sections for the first, I don't know, nine or 10 subsections were. Were like identical except for the words I-1 district and I-2 district. Um, however, somewhere along the line, we added. A subsection in between 25.01 and 25.08. Which caused a difference in the section numbers. So this refer. Became obsolete and outdated and in error. And in order to correct it. We would have to change this 07 to the 08. This 07 to 08 and this 07 to 08. Which are all included in a motion. That I would advise zoning commission to make to order the correction of the following three clerical errors. As discovered in some sections 25.08 and 25.10. This is the corrective action to be undertaken. And the changes should be effective immediately. This would be an administrative change to the zoning code. I, I would add a, uh, line at the end of the section. To, uh, identify the fact that there was an administrative change correcting clerical errors on this date. Um, for further reference and the zoning commission minutes would, would substantiate what those changes would be. Uh, if the commission agrees to make those changes. Otherwise, um. We, we have an error in our zoning resolution.
Is this, as a legal advisor, is this appropriate to do it this way? Or do we have to go to public hearing?
Um, we. We would not have to go to public hearing to.
Okay.
Correct clerical changes, provided, Richard, I believe that's all it is. It's just it referenced the wrong. Code section?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, if it's, if it's okay, I don't have a problem with it. I just wanna make sure we're on, it's on legal ground.
Yep.
Okay. Um, does everybody have a copy of what Richard has? I don't.
No, I don't.
Um, can we, uh, Richard and legal, could we? I know we wanted to, I know what you, uh, we'd probably have to approve. Motion to approve these clerical errors and corrections of the clerical errors. But I would like to see them maybe at the next meeting?
Yeah, I was gonna say, actually, since some people haven't seen it yet, I know this came out a little bit late, it would be better. To have in the minutes that everybody had a chance to look at it, review it, make sure the clerical errors were there. So. Since it's just clerical changes, I think it actually might be better since everybody hasn't seen it. Um, to hold off on the vote until next meeting after everybody's seen it. Because otherwise it'll be in the minutes that, that it hasn't been read by everyone yet.
Yeah.
I, I think that's better. Does anybody have a problem with, um, Richard, was, uh, just send it out. Ross review for next meeting, which is in June? Anybody have a problem with that?
A- a- actually, uh, Lori, you still with us? Lori?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay. If, have you been able to see everything I put up on the screen so far?
Yes.
If, if, if I email you a copy of this file.
Sure.
Um, can, can you send it out to everybody?
Yes, I can.
Okeydoke.
Okay, that's, if, okay, that's what we'll do. If nobody has an objection to it, that's what we'll do. Well. Like what, what, what we did with the last one, we just table the discussion. So, so for everybody to get the, get the email. Get the, uh, changes and then we'll look at it and we'll discuss it at next meeting.
Yeah, I think I understand what, what Rich wants to do, but I'd like to see it in writing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the same position. So nobody has an objection, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Okay, Richard, any more new business that you threw in there without us?
Well, ju- just, just one thing. Trying to rewrite it, just so you know, this, this is an update on rewriting section. 28, our sign section.
Uh-huh.
N- not only is it a challenge to, uh, piece together some new rules and, and, and to make everything relevant to. Today's, uh, way of doing things and, and what businesses are trying to do. But the, the formatting as a Word document that, that is currently. Incorporated into our sign section is horrendous to work with. And, uh. And, and I, I spend more time, I, I, actually, I, I have been spending more time on trying to reformat. To get everything into the same format and, and I'm not even sure that I'm getting there. Uh, but I'm, I'm spending an awful lot of time with word processing formatting. It is driving me totally crazy. But, uh, I, I'm continuing to work on it and, and we're gonna get it done. Fortunately, it's, uh. It, it, it doesn't seem like it's, it, it, it's a, uh. It's a project that has to get done right away because businesses are all trying to do the wrong thing with their signage. That's, that's not the problem. So we've been working with our sign section the way it is for quite a while. We, we can continue it for a couple more months. Until I get all this stuff sorted out and changed over. Um. And really, really, if, if I knew that all of us were able to see it tonight. We, uh, we have a serious inquiry, th- this is just an FYI. We've got a serious inquiry from a company that wants to build a three-story. Climate-controlled indoor storage facility. At the corner of Mennery Avenue and Chatham Drive. And, and, uh, they've made a similar use petition to the trustees. Who are gonna make a decision on that petition on May 19th. Um, they, they've got an interesting architectural rendering for the way the building will look. Uh, which, which I think you guys, you guys are gonna get totally amazed by seeing. So I, I'll send that out to you by email. Um, and, and then hopefully, it, it, it's a pretty large file. It's like three and a half megabytes. So it's gonna take a little while to download to you. But, uh, it, take, take a look at it when you get it. I, I. I think you'll find it to be a very interesting architectural rendering of a three-story self-storage building. That is kinda actually like totally within the Western Reserve architectural style. So.
Interesting.
Yeah, but look for that. I'll, I'll send it out tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, I, that's good. All right. Richard, anything else under zoning inspectors' report?
Uh, that should do it.
Okay, any other, okay, any further business that comes with board's commission? If there is none, uh, I need a motion to adjourn at 7:30.
Still moved.
A second motion.
Okay, motion's been made in second to adjourn, meeting's adjourned. And folks, uh, hopefully we'll see you in person, maybe June 8th. Richard, that possible?
I, I, I think it might be possible. Yeah. Uh, the town hall has been reopened to the public. Um, distancing rule and things like that are in effect. No groups of more than 10 for the time being, but you know, it, 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 every week that goes on now, there are changes coming. So we'll just wait and see what, what they are and what we have to do.
Play it there.
Yeah, and, and in the meantime, I hope everybody stays safe and stays well.
Thank you.
Okay, well, folks, you have a big month and we'll talk to you later.
Good night, y'all.
Thanks, guys.
Bye. Bye, guys.
Bye.